Good evening and welcome to the July 15 regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a forum this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a regular meeting on June 24, a special meeting on June 27, and a special meeting on July 2. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of those three meetings. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have we had any requests for members of the House to speak this evening? Great. Rick, could you please walk us through tonight's agenda?
I certainly will. I'll also just give the public a quick update. The board did meet twice between the last regular meeting in June and tonight's meeting. On June 27 they met to address personnel retirement, as well as accept the resignation from Adit Almag as school board member. Adit's term was to end in December of 2013, but did resign prior to that. So then on July 2, the board took action on RIOS restructuring of my work agreement, which will continue for two more years. And then also went through a process to determine the filling of the vacancy, which the board will address tonight at the regular meeting later in the action. As far as agenda items for tonight's meeting, we'll have a brief update on some of the leadership plans going on for the upcoming school year. We'll take care of our consent agenda items, our numerous personnel items, recommendations that the administration is bringing forward. It's a busy time of hiring. We have some memberships to address. And then the regular meeting will include the appointment of the new board member to complete the term of former board member Almag. We'll talk a little bit about fees for the upcoming school year, as well as take a look at the board committee assignments and appointments. And then we have a variety of policies to review. With that, we'll move into discussion items, information items. The board will also be meeting in a closed session for a brief period later tonight that the administration is recommending due to counsel with our attorneys on a matter related to construction.
Thank you, Rick. First item is our reports this evening, a leadership update. Dr. Dressen?
Just again to update the board with the planning for the upcoming school year. We've done a lot of discussion. This actually started in January of 2013. A lot of our focus as a school district is, again, on the strategic plan that is celebrating its first birthday tonight, where we approved the strategic plan last July. And it's our focus really taking a look at next generation of Edina Public Schools. Again, we'll start out with that mission, and we've reduced those 47 words to three words, "all for all." And it's really been our focus of how all of us can work together for all students to make sure they can thrive in an ever-changing society. Our values continue to guide our way. Those have been very, again, very consistent throughout the course of the development of the school district. The vision for the district as we move into year two again is continue to have a strong national presence, as well as we're going to begin exploring how we can continue to be, have an international presence, both in partnership, as well as in benchmarking. We continue to have high expectations, so while we're looking at next generation and the new look of Edina Public Schools, we'll continue to stay strong with our core values and our core curriculums and what we really value of making a difference for our young people. This is a slide that we often use, just showing again how it's a process of how we move everything forward, where we do that learning or that studying phase, then we move into an implementation stage. And as we work that implementation in, we will standardize some of the programs that we have in place. And when we standardize, we're also going to be looking at what leaves the system or exits the system, because we know that as we bring in new, there are probably some things that don't align anymore to our mission, and then those need to exit. So we're moving through that. Our three major goals relate to personalized learning, they relate to comprehensive programming, they relate to partnerships. As it relates to personalized learning, we'll be moving on the "all for all" initiative. This was a study that was completed early this spring, and there'll be seven major focus areas that they'll be reporting on back to the board. But again, this is closing both the academic and the opportunity gap for all of our learners. We are going to be moving forward a year earlier than we had projected, likely with an all-day kindergarten program, as the board is aware. We do have funding coming from the state beginning next year. I'm speaking to the 2014-15 school year. And so we are going to begin preparing what's the possibility to do that. We'll likely include some construction if we're going to move into that. And so we'll be quickly studying that and then making some recommendations to the board to address. This was part of our strategic plan, and now the state funding does allow us to move into that. We'll continue to grow our personalized learning devices. E-learning square that actually was kicked off today in grades nine, excuse me, grades six, nine, and 10. We've got some unbelievable pricing going on around that, and we expect to have a good strong response. We'll continue to grow our accountability to the strategic plan around using the term "vision cards." This is that balance score card we look at more than just an academic score. We've made some good progress on that. From a software standpoint, we'll continue to grow that. Second program area goal area is around comprehensive programming. It's our first year of moving forward with the secondary academic program. This is, again, an area that we've discussed a lot as a school board and as a community. And now we're ready to implement it. We'll actually begin our training of our I-team, our implementation team, in August. And they will, again, take time to understand the program and then move into it. And we'll be reporting on a regular basis, both to the community, to the board, to our staff, on how this will be implemented over a three-year process. Also, this fall, we'll begin the study around birth through grade five, so we'll have this comprehensive programming, where it literally is from birth through that 12th grade experience. And we also know that our community education program continues to have its strategic plan. So what we're really doing is taking a look at how do we need to respond to the needs of our community, our students, our families, in all areas of learning. We'll continue to grow our work on time and funds to make sure they align to our mission. We've saw some adjustments that we made this past year, both in time and funds. We'll continue to explore that. And then we'll be growing our safety and security plans, best practices related to that. There's a lot of new work going on that. We're in a sitting where we do believe we have a lot of good things going on, and we're just going to take it to the next level. Our third area of goal is the partnership piece, professional learning community. That is the collaborative work that occurs in our schools. We'll continue to grow that and hope to have that pretty well standardized in a year or two. We have a lot of teachers going through training related to that. Several were at training at a national level in the Twin Cities this past week, and we have another group that will be going through training in a couple of weeks here in Edina. We'll be growing our communication and outreach efforts in the community and within our school district. We have a plan that was approved by the board, again, this past spring. School facilities will be a big area of study for us going forward. The maintenance project at Concord is making good progress. It's going to be a tight finish, but we do believe it will be finished on time, and we'll be ready for our students and our staff and our families. We'll be studying hard the additions and implementation plans related to any additions, and then some changes as it relates to school security. And finally, we'll continue to look at ways we can grow our partnership within the district. As we look at this process, we identify that major goal. Each goal has several initiatives. The board will be taking a look at that later tonight in their discussion area. We'll bring it back for action in August. Each of those initiatives have a timeframe. They have an administrator who oversees it, who that reports to, whether it's a full report back to the board for action, or if it's just an administrative report back. We'll be identifying planned outcomes, so that we know what's expected in the accountability component. This will also tie back to our vision cards. Beyond that, we also have action tasks, so that we make sure all of this is following at a pace that makes sense. And this is that frame that we use always, that we have many things going on. It's a very active strategic plan. And so we have to make sure that as our tasks are moving down, that they do stay aligned. But these would probably be, if I'd say, our five major works. One will be moving the secondary study in, the facility study, our work around closing the gap, "all for all," the piloting of the e-learning squared, again, working on aligning the budget, and then the study that we'll bring forward to the board later this upcoming spring around birth through grade five. That's a quick flyover of our strategic work. It is the driving force of how we do believe we'll reach "all for all." Take any questions at this time?
U5 study, do we see it as a similar timeline as the secondary study?
We would. We would see. The nice thing is we know that, I think the study will move a little bit more rapidly, because we now have a model of how we're receiving input from the community, from the students, and from the staff. But I would say it would be a very similar timeframe that we'd bring it forward for the board, probably a March-April timeframe for approval, and then that would be phased in over three years as well.
So do we have an expectation that, like we had with the secondary study, where there's a couple of nights where community members and parents could come and look at what things were sort of on the board and comment and get a flavor and have some input? We'll be doing the same thing?
We're going to be, in fact, we met today with our consultant to help us frame that. Again, we're looking at six sites rather than three sites, so how do we address that? And we do want to make it a very active process. And really, these are, the students who are in this system are the ones that really are going to see the entire experience. We want a lot of involvement.
Additional questions?
I just have a clarification question on the reference to secondary study. Does the Phase 1 refer to Phase 1 of implementation?
Right. So we see it as about a two- or three-year process, for sure.
So the first year was information gathering?
Right. This is the actual implementation.
And then this is Phase 1 of implementation?
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is our consent agenda. Got a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve our consent agenda. Any additions or corrections to the consent agenda as presented?
No, but I will note, and I don't know if I'm allowed to vote or not, since in the list of things that, the checks that are being paid, we got the refund for my daughter's lunch account, so I am listed as a payee for a check at this time, so you know.
Any additional questions or comments about the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Action portion of tonight's meeting. The first item is the appointment of a school board member to replace Adit Almag, who has resigned from the board due to a change in residency. I'd like to open the floor to nominations.
I move that we appoint Brian Hedberg to fill out the unexpired term of Adit's term.
I second.
Any additional nominations? Seeing none, I had a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close nominations. Can I, we have one individual nominated for this appointment. All those in favor of approving this appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to Brian, and thank you for his willingness to serve. The board did talk about this, how best to fill this position, because it is a five-month period. And we felt it was a good option to have a board member who is experienced. And Brian's name was talked about, and he agreed to serve. So we thank him for his period of service back on the board through December. Next up, we have our fees for 2012-13. Got a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the fees for 2013-14. Any discussion or background?
No recommended changes, and we are studying with the new activities athletic director fees for 14-15. We'll gather other district data, come forward with that. And there was nothing in the budget process that would have adjusted these fees.
Margot, this, the schedule that's listed here is the result of a study that was conducted, is it a year ago, to help equalize some of our fees?
It was through the last --
Maybe it was two, was it two years?
Yeah, through the last, probably progressed two years, or processed two years ago.
So I know it was something that we looked at as a district, just for parity and consistency.
Right.
And so the facilities fees have not changed either?
We had the facilities fees, was it May, I believe May's agenda, and there was only one change there, with adding clarification on the camps and clinics, actually specifying a rate for that. We didn't have that before. Otherwise, the facility schedule rate did not change.
Okay, so we saw that for discussion, and now we're doing it for approval, or?
That was approved.
That was approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just no questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, our board committee appointments, liaisons, and representatives. Got a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the appointments. There's a couple of minor tweaks here. The first is that Brian should be replacing Adit on the ed fund, so have him as the first and maintain Regina as the alternate for now. That was the intent, at least. And we have both Brian and Sarah at Creek Valley. We can cross Brian off there and have him just at Southview. I think that was the intent, but it was some confusion, because there was a flip right before Adit resigned, because of Sarah's conflict now at Southview, having children there. Any other items that we missed or overlooked? Discussion? All those in favor of approving with those couple of minor tweaks? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Policy review, can we bring those all up as a single motion? So can I have a motion to combine all the policy reviews?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to combine those six policies for approval. We've seen them before. It's 412 personnel resignation, layoff, termination, or nonrenewal employees. 414 personnel mandatory reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Personnel mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. 418 personnel alcohol and drug-free workplace. 419 personnel tobacco-free environment. And 620 education programs and credit for learning. Any discussion about combining those into a single motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I bring that main motion to the floor now?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded for the approval of those six policy items. Who'd like to start on 412?
Just a quick walkthrough. There's no new notes since we last saw this policy at our June 24 meeting. Unless there were any questions from anyone as I read it, good. On 414, there is rewording in paragraph one under the purpose. The wording should be, this is a correction from what is in the older version of Board Book. It says that the policy provides district employees the legal requirements. It should actually be statutory. Statutory is crossed out, and legal is in. It should be the reverse. This is statutory requirements. That's just a quick update, and I believe that the newer Posting Board Book has that correction in it. So depending on which one you're looking at. And then otherwise, language is just updated for reference to statute at the end of the policy. And that was there the last time we saw it. Let's see, our next one. 418, or did I skip, 415? I scrolled too quickly. Backup scroll. Did you have a question?
Just a note on 414.
Yes.
Notes on the bottom of the form at the end, it was reviewed 9/26/11. Do we want to add this current date to it? Did you review that form or not? The appendix?
No.
The appendix? Or, I'm sorry, you're referencing the appendix or the policy? The amendment on the 2011 for the policy?
Yeah, I'm on page 156.
I think that's a state mandated form. I would assume that that's the state's date when they updated it, not our date.
Okay.
That makes sense. 415, since we last saw this, just some small language revision. Paragraph one, we struck district employees, so just, that's just reworded as written. That's a small change. And then paragraph four B has a small shall to a must, which is part of what we're looking at on policy in general. Shall is struck and replaced with the word must. 418, general language cleanup, just, so just small revisions as written since we last saw this in June. 419, again, paragraph one, the language is revised since we last saw it for a smoother flow, but the intent the same since we last saw that. And let's see, what else? For action 620. So since we last looked at this, we've done some rewording in paragraph five F2. It's not significant, but that's the primary change since we saw this. So basically, everything else is what we looked at at our last board meeting. So those are the action policies.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those updated six policies, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're on to discussion. First item is the Leadership Action Plan, which we presented this evening.
I had a couple of questions, just to kind of place everything in context, as I read it. On the first goal with personalized learning, there's a reference to standardization on formative and summative learning. And my question is how that differs from the way formative and summative goals have been used at the middle school to date.
So that's a lot around the software package we're looking at, and it's the assessment work that we're doing to create consistency in assessments at the two middle schools. So it's the work we're doing.
Yes.
But we're also now looking at a software program to help us assist with that. So it's some piloting work being done.
Thank you. And that's the learn, thus the learning, because I knew that we, that that component was not new, but the software and looking at consistency, that makes sense, so thank
I had a question around all-day kindergarten. We have prepare for all-day kindergarten, which I know that a year from now, the legislature has agreed to start funding all-day kindergarten. How are we handling that as a district with some of our space constraints?
So we're working with our architect. We expect to have, I believe, two classrooms that we have to look at additions on, and so we're just doing some assessment, can it be done? So it's not a guarantee that it will. We're just preparing for it, and whether we can do it next year or the year after, when that would be. In the strategic plan, we have a commitment to it. So we're just going to, this is one that's probably going to take action quite quickly. So once we move into August, September, we'll have to get, you know, information from architects. We'll have to get programming information. I'll look to take a look at instructional class size, because our all-day program is through a community education, and it has a pair of professionals with it, have different class sizes. So we're going to be looking at enrollment projections across the board. There's a lot of data gathering, but we know that we need to get this to the board, probably in an October-November timeframe.
And are we, as part of what we're looking at for this, are we considering the fact that there may still be families who that do not want all-day kindergarten?
So part of it will be surveying, just again, the assessment around that. We're seeing the trend more and more go to all-day, but that may be an option that we want to consider. But the trade-off, again, then, is the transportation and, you know, the level of demand, and do we have enough of the demand in a neighborhood to require that? So we, just again, it's going to be a data gathering. We're going to try to meet every parent's and every family's needs the best we can with our, you know, commitments that we have.
Thanks.
And keep it posted, and we'll keep the community informed as well.
Just sort of on the same lines, while I'm thinking about it. Margot, will we need additional buses to accommodate all-day kindergarten?
You know, I would, I will check with David White on that. We will have bus savings for the midday transportation. And it depends on where the students are located in terms, they are riding in the morning and the afternoon one way now, if they're in a half-day program, and then they're transported in the middle of the day. So I'm assuming no, but I would like to confirm that with him. And then there would certainly be a savings in midday transportation, because we would not have the to and from in the middle of the day for them, as you do with a half-day program.
Right now, we only have a couple of half-day classes in each elementary?
Yeah, there's a, not a, well, Mary's here. She can rattle it right off the top of her head.
We have morning and afternoon at Norman, we have morning and afternoon at Concord, and then we have a morning program at the other, and morning and afternoon at Cornelia. So Concord and Cornelia still have morning and afternoon half-day kindergarten. The other four sites, Countryside, Highlands, Creek Valley, and Lannabale, all have morning kindergarten only and no PM kindergarten.
Thanks, Mary.
Is there no questions or comments?
I had a question under goal three, addressing partnerships. The first action item addresses studying family advocates, and I wondered if that's, if there's a definition we have yet on family advocate, or if that's something that we're hoping to explore?
Something we'll explore. That was part of the strategic plan.
Okay.
I think it gets a little bit into some of the work we're doing with our secondary study for the advisory model, looking at some new advisory approaches. Also, we want to make sure families who don't feel represented, that we have a way of reaching out to them. And we do think our district equity leadership council will help with that as well. So it is an area that we're growing, an area of study and learning versus implementation.
Where we have administrators listed multiple ones, internally, is it determined who's sort of owns it?
Tomorrow.
Okay. I don't care who it is.
Yeah, yeah. So we are going to, I didn't want to flip too many coins in the process, but our lead team actually meets tomorrow in an all-day retreat to finalize and drill deeper into the expected outcomes, and then also identify who will be the point person driving all this work, and then also making sure that we're aligned. So again, because of the number of initiatives, we have to make sure this is a paced exercise.
You don't want to miss tomorrow, or you'll end up with all.
I had another question that I just wasn't as familiar with, Advanced Go Green Improvement Plan.
That's our environmental efforts. So we've got some specific things we're trying to do, especially at the sites, around recycling and reusing, and so we've got a couple of major initiatives that we're going to work at. It's much more site-based.
Okay.
But Eric Hamilton, who's our new director of building and grounds, and Mary have been a champion on that.
Right, thanks.
And I think that the committee comes, reports every other year to the board.
Additional questions or comments? Leadership Action Plan? And next up is our 13-14 school board agenda.
These are routine items, and what we'll then also do is, once the board approves the action plan, we'll plug those action items in, so that'll complement the board agenda. But we do get this posted for the public and for the staff's needs, so they're aware of some of the timing. Most of the ones that the board sees tonight are routine items, or items that happen on an annual or every-two-year cycle. And so we also then, on a monthly basis, update that, so that the board is aware of some of the things happening as we move into the upcoming month.
Questions or thoughts? Anybody see any things that you?
Can I just have a point of clarification? When we have the dates and we put a dash W, is that work session?
That's a work session.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So those are the only work sessions we're going to have?
That's correct.
Right.
We don't want to take action on that, but.
Shh, it's one meeting.
That's right.
That's right.
Any questions or? Next up, we have policies, 421, 23, 24, and 31.
So good discussion, policy. We always have plenty to talk about. So just a general overview, aside from the rewording, which we're always looking at for clarification and brevity when possible. For 421 and gifts to employees, the primary change as listed in here is striking paragraph four regarding any employee being required to confer with administration before acceptance of a gift. We felt that the policy, the rest of the policy speaks well to the guidelines for gift giving and didn't feel that it was necessary to add that particular paragraph. In 423, employee-student relationships, again, in addition to general clarification for wording, a cross-reference has been added at the end of the policy to 634, which is electronic technologies acceptable use policy. That policy goes into more depth regarding social media, and that particular topic is not touched on in as great a depth in 423, thus the cross-reference. 424, there's just general rewording in this particular review. And in policy 431, compensatory practices, 3G has been deleted. And again, because this, it's, there's already review of compensation that's built into guidelines and work agreements, so not a necessary addition to this particular policy. But any questions that anyone has before we take this back to our next discussion?
On the, oh, go ahead. On the gift policy, the, the language is left to some interpretation, which I believe the, the decision point being ultimately with you. I remember actually when this came up several years ago, and we kind of had to backpedal because there was an administrator saying that, you know, all gifts are going to be stopped. You know, this included, you know, $5 gift cards to our teachers for coffee. So I like that the language is, is kept simple. What do we see as, I mean, what's the breaking point where this becomes beyond a gift?
You know, it varies a little bit, but we're in that $50 range, $25 range, you know? Again, it's, and it's, it's the discomfort. I mean, if a teacher feels it's too much, they will typically check in with the principal, and the principal, kind of the principals all kind of connect together with my office, and we'll kind of sort that out. So we've tried to minimize some of those above and beyonds. But with coaches and advisors, it is a culture of our community that they like to gift, and so we try to honor that and try to be respectful of it without having it any, have any purpose or leverage. This also can apply to vendors, and we're much more black and white on that as far as what's accepted there.
Great, thanks.
Is there any plan to do more community education around this policy? This would be one particularly that I would think we'd want to take to the parent leadership council, maybe go and give it to every PTO, PTA at the beginning of the year and say, here's a policy that you need to be aware of. Because there's one thing I sort of hear out and about in the district are people saying, well, I, my thought, I was only supposed to give small tokens, and over here in this classroom, they're giving large tokens. So I would think that this is something that perhaps we need to just build in some parent education, just so that all the schools feel like they're getting the same message.
Right. And I think sometimes where the differences between classrooms will be if one classroom chooses to do a group gift, so each individual parent isn't gone above and beyond any particular limit. But yeah, I can see where those, and bringing it to PLC seems like a perfect venue.
Just no questions, comments? Policies? We're going to rescind 420. Rerates, I don't know if there's any discussion needed there.
Any questions? I think that.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
It's not a man, it's not mandated?
No.
Okay.
It said we're rescinding it because it's already covered in other law?
It, yeah, it's other, it's covered either in other law or in state and federal law by which we're already bound. So there, there isn't really a necessity for this particular policy.
Do we need to go to closed session?
Oh, information? Do you want to cover information before?
Just the information, again, this posted for the, within the minutes is just to reflect the work that did occur last year, 2013-14, kind of a summary of the Leadership Action Plan that I presented tonight. Last year's is updated there, and so that annual again is updated and included for public to review.
Any other information? Seeing none, can I get a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of moving to closed session, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. We are now in closed session.
Daddy, take you. Get a big old blizzard.
Can I get a motion to? Wave to yourself, Lenny. So moved. Can I get a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded to reopen the meeting after a closed session regarding attorney-client discussion having to do with some issues regarding some panels at the high school. All those in favor of reopening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Can you state the motion that we're about to approve, please, Margot?
Motion is to approve the terms of the settlement, recommended terms of the settlement agreement with Kathy Sella having the authority of the board to work out the four or so, or the few recommended changes.
Have a motion?
I would move.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Margot, can you give a 30-second review of what's going on here? Not the details, sort of the history? Maybe I'll try.
The, this is just ongoing with a construction issue.
Issue with panels at the high school.
Correct.
It's been going on for several years, and we think we're close to some potential resolution over the next nine months.
So this facilitates us going to the next stages of this project, process.
Are we missing anything, Kathy?
No, it's an mediated settlement that would bind all parties, but as the motion is stated, it's, it's still subject to revision of certain terms.
Excellent. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Thank you all for all the time that's been put into that. We've gone through our information portion of tonight's meeting. We've gone through a closed meeting. Any announcements?
Just to update the board, a couple of things. We're still working with Minnesota Department of Education on the whole equity location levy. That's the area that will continue to be an area of discussion. We'll probably have a lot of us focus at the Finance and Facility Committee meeting and then talked about at the board meeting in August. But this is, again, new legislation that's still being sorted. It has some potential for additional revenues for Edina schools. We're working with the partnership details on Hopkins School District. There may be some minor tweaks from what we approved in May with their council, very minor, but it'll come back in August. As far as capital funds, we are having some need as it relates to some textbooks, and so we will probably be accessing and seeking access to some carryover funds from the previous year, as well as taking some of the discretionary funds that superintendent has to offset about $1,000, $100,000 of textbook needs that have not been covered under the first initial request made in June. This is just part of the fact that we've added some additional techs for intervention support. And the other thing is that last year, we updated six different curriculum areas in order to get those needs met. We are seeing a shift, so we do think it's a bubble. We are also partnering with several of the school districts on the West Side, Metro, to do digital curriculums so that by 2015, there will be 40 courses on digital. And again, the partnership that we're paying just under $8,000 for, I believe, to make that happen. So we're just in this shift time, and so we have the funds available, but we're coming back with a resolution in August on that. E-learning two, that initiative's going out the door, and so families will be hearing about that. But the seven-inch portable screen is under $30 with the offset, and the Chromebook is $99. So we have a strong partnership with Best Buy working on that. And we remain the only school that they're going to work with for one more year before they would pursue that with other schools nationally. And then finally, we've gotten some early AP results. We, our students just do unbelievable. 2,300 students take AP tests with an approval, which again, those numbers are growing. The scores of four or better were, or three or better were 85%. A quarter of those scores were fives, and 60% were fours. So when you put that down into numbers, that is saving families in the Edina community $2.7 million in course saving, you know, from tuition fees. And so we compliment the students and the staff on that, and we'll be getting details on how that breaks down, as well as some of the other state assessment scores in August and May, September, those are just starting to roll out. That would conclude my remarks.
Thanks, Rick. Any other?
What are you going to mention?
Comments? As we all heard tonight, we pointed Brian Hedberg to replace Adit Omag. Adit has served the board almost 16 years over the years, and we thank her for her service. Adit continues to pioneer new initiatives. Her and Meg Rodriguez have put together edinagivandgo.org, and I think it's a, it's a great service to the community to allow giving for individuals in need, sort of micro-giving, if you will, initiative. So it's, again, we want to thank Adit certainly for her service, but also make you aware of a new initiative that she and Meg have pulled together as well for the community. Any other comments? Questions? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.